Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the July 2019 Planning Commission meeting. At this time, I'd please if you don't mind silencing your cellphones out there, that would help out a lot. Amber, roll call, please.
Wayne Beletso.
Here.
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 Okay, before we start, I just want to give a couple administrative-type announcements and just kind of make sure everybody understands how we proceed during these, the hearing here tonight. So, the commission will be presented by agenda items from the City Planning Department, and then a representative that for each of those items has the opportunity to come forward and make any comments that they would like. If appropriate, I'll open a public hearing, and that's, that'll be your opportunity to come forward and speak on any of these issues. And we ask that you kind of limit your time to five minutes, if you would. And then, once everybody has spoken, I'll close the public hearing. The representative will also have another chance to address any questions that might have come up, and then we'll open it for debate and vote by the commission. The other issue that's of note is the, our responsibilities that are related to subdivision regulations. By Alabama statute, the Planning Commission is the final approval authority for all subdivision Platts. And so with regard to these subdivision Platts, the commission acts as an administrative body and is bound by limitations that are contained in state laws, the city zoning ordinance, and the regulations that we might, that we have previously adopted over time. So while there's a public hearing allowed and required for each of these, the preliminary plat, for sure, the, and the welcome, anybody's welcome to come on up and talk about that, please understand that this commission's authority is strictly limited to confirming that the plat meets or exceeds specific requirements in the laws and regulations that I've just mentioned. So, moving right along. At this time, the first item will be citizens' communications. So this is a time when, if anybody out there would like to come up here and speak on something that is not on the agenda, or is on the consent agenda, and we have three items on the consent agenda which has to do with our, our meeting minutes from last month, the Talmage annexation, and a subdivision final plat in the Preserve. Would anybody like to come forward and speak on any of those items? Seeing no one, we'll move on to our consent agenda. And like I mentioned, we have packet meetings from the 10th of June, packet meeting minutes from the 13th of June, regular meeting. Item number one is PL 2019-159, the Talmage Annexation, and item number two is PL 2019-346, the Preserve Phases 4B and 6A Final Subdivision Plat. Mr. Cotton?
Yes, sir. We do have just one annexation, one final plat for you tonight. We'll start with the Talmage Annexation request. You can see this property has limited frontage along Bonnie Glen Road, which comes off of Hamilton Road between essentially its intersection with Moores Mill and Bent Creek Road. This has been an area of the city that's been under fairly prolific residential, single-family detached development. Some fairly significant changes were made to the future land use plan that changed a number of classifications, including the classification for the subject property as part of the five-year update. You can see the property is mostly surrounded by property that's in the city limits. The areas, of course, that are shown in white are still pockets that are in unincorporated Lee County. Parcels 14 and 1/2 acres in size. This is just a survey of the exhibit, and just for the commission's information, you'll see that little jog in the upper right-hand corner. This homestead is already in the city limits. It does meet all the requirements and criteria of our annexation policy, most recently amended in 2012, and we recommend that it be approved. So we move up to the other side of the city, up in the northwest quadrant of the city specifically, the Preserve Plan Development District. It's been under development and construction for roughly 14 years. It's currently our largest plan development district in the city. This is plat 4B, Phase 4B and 6A Final Plat. This is on the north side of Farmville Road where the largesse of the Plan Development District exists. You can see the property that's outlined. This is the preliminary plat that was recently approved by the commission in 2018. And this is the final plat, very much mirror images of one another and very much consistent and in alignment with the master development plan. This is an aerial view, just to show you this current state of development in the Preserve, with obviously most of the developed property being located to the south, and they're generally moving in a north and north to northwest direction with development activity and continue to do so. With that, we recommend approval of the plat, and we recommend approval of the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. This does not require a public hearing, so is there any questions, comments, or motion from the commission?
Move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a move, I have a motion, and in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those say, opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, I'm going to take the next couple of items out of order. We have three items that have been requested by the applicants to be postponed until the next meeting, and so we have to take a quick action on each one of those. So what I'd like to do is start with agenda item number four, PL 2019-00160, the Talmage rezoning, and ask for a motion to postpone until the next meeting.
So moved.
Just, just need, make sure we say the date certain, August 8th, please.
Date certain, August 8th.
Moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. PL 2019-161, Talmage Subdivision. Motion to postpone until August 8th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. PL 2019-217, Clifton Rezoning. Motion to postpone until August 8th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, so let's go back to item number three, which is PL 2019-345, the Academic Detached Dwelling Units, ADDU, Zoning Ordinance Text Amendment prohibiting ADDUs in the North College Historic District and, and parcels abutting the district. Mr. Cotton, will you present?
Yes, sir. This is a zoning ordinance text amendment. It's a city-initiated amendment that, of course, regulations for academic detached dwelling units were fairly recently approved by the city council back in April. Somewhat after that time, one of our council members that, that represents a good portion of land in this area expressed a desire to have some additional protections for, for the historic district specifically from academic detached dwelling units. And, of course, the commission, in a less formal way, weighed in on this issue at a packet meeting, and I passed your sentiment along to the city manager, who then in turn conveyed that to the council. It then came back to the commission, or the council. They took formal action, voted to remand this issue unanimously to the commission. So it's, it's here again to ask for your consideration, obviously in a more formal capacity. We discussed this at some length at your packet meeting on Monday. You are asked to review this, make a recommendation as you see fit, so that the council can then consider it presumably at their meeting on August 20th. The staff report, just in the interest of transparency and exclusivity, or inclusivity, the staff report essentially includes all the information that was initially provided as part of the initial academic detached unit regulatory proposal, and essentially all the activity that has transpired since it, it began its path through the public hearing process, which began in January of 19. So a memory refresher is probably in order, and I attempted to accomplish that in the staff report. If you have any comments or questions of me, I'm happy to answer those for you.
Okay, thank you. And let me just verify, or just to validate, I, the wording of this particular item in the packet.
Yes, sir.
Is based on what the final, I don't know if you want to call it the vote out of the city council. This is what they're looking, this contains the...
This is an amendment that was specifically requested by Councilmember Griswold, and it has been prepared as such. It is now for you to deliberate and essentially weigh in on it, make any suggestions or modifications that you would like to recommend to the council, recognizing that the city council, of course, will have the final decision and can, and can make amendments and changes as, as the council sees fit.
Thank you. Okay, it's the, so we don't have an applicant, because this is a text amendment, and what we'll do now is open the public hearing. So, before I start, please, if you have not, if you're going to speak, if you have not already signed up here on our, the board up here in the front, please do so after you speak, if you would, but now I will open the public hearing for this item. Anybody that'd like to come forward, come, come speak now. And state your name and give your address, too, before you start.
I'm Sherry Griswold at 425 North College Street. And first of all, I wanted to say thank you to you guys on the commission. I know how difficult it is to serve on a city board, or a commission, or a council, so I very much appreciate you guys doing this and helping us out with this. I have a major interest in the request before you, and I'm sorry, I have notes, I have to read it, so I don't miss anything.
That's okay, go ahead. No problem.
I have a major interest because I do live in, I love the historic district. I sometimes think I think more of it than I should, because I think it's so special, and a lot of people don't even know we have one, but I think it's a very important part of Auburn, and it's a jewel of our city. I actively sought out and bought a house in Auburn's Historic District because I believe in small towns and cities, and I believe in keeping Auburn's small-town charm and character is important for not just the city of Auburn, but for the state of Alabama. As many other cities and counties in the state have proven, Auburn can grow and also maintain our Mayberry-like quality that make us so special. And when buying my home, I chose history over potential real estate value to help preserve what I saw as a rapidly declining resource in Auburn, a resource that attracts students to the adversity and adults to the city. I wasn't surprised recently when I read an article in the Villager newspaper that quoted students as being disappointed that the city they chose for its small-town culture has lost a lot of that chult, culture in just the time between they were, when they were freshmen and seniors. But Auburn, of course, is still a wonderful, special place to live, and in my opinion, it always will be. No matter how much it changes, it will always have more to offer than so many other parts of our country. As an aside, it's interesting to me right now and gives me hope that there's major interest in serving the Colors' Home, if you all are familiar with what's going on there. I hope somebody does come forward with the resources and ability and the time to save it, and, but I don't understand why that home has been singled out for preservation when so many others were destroyed in the name of progress, in the name of moving forward, growth, and in improvement. I'm sorry to say that I'm pessimistic that it'll be saved, in great part because the people involved in the property ownership have known this house was in jeopardy for at least a year, and are only now, at the last hour, reacting in what seems like a desperate attempt to save it, when that work should have been started when the property was sold long, a long time ago. Time is short, unless there is a miracle in the works, but maybe it will happen. But that is another issue. It's a shame, however, that that house isn't protected as mine is in a historic district. I live with great restrictions on what I can do with my house and my property, and those of us who live in the district believe so strongly that Auburn needs to retain some of its architectural history, especially in a main corridor leading into the city, that we live with arguably more restrictions on residences than many other parts of the city. Some may argue that recommend, that the recommendation before you isn't necessary because the district is already restricted and protected by the oversight of the Historic Preservation Commission. But the commission oversees only the design of structures, not how those structures are used, and ADDUs could meet HPC design requirements as many dormitories and still be allowed in the historic district. As you can see from the Planning Development Department handout, our small historic district has six distinct zoning designations in a very small, small space, each with its own table of what building usage is and isn't permitted. This proposed ordinance change in front of you tonight would preclude confusion and give a definite standard of no ADDs across all the historic district zones. I believe Auburn is made better by our postage-stamped piece of a historic district. You can help the historic district by, as requested, restricting the areas that abut this district from ADDD building usage, because ADDUs have the possibility of encroaching upon and crowding out the sense of history that the district and the district alone engenders. You can make a choice today that would protect this history rather than inviting future reactive scenarios, such as the one the city is facing today with the Colors' House. Can we be proactive in the district now, rather than opening ourselves to having to react in apparent desperation as we are now with the Colors' House? We can by recommending that the city council approve this ordinance change in full. If, however, the commission believes the ordinance change of prohibiting ADDUs on adjacent properties is not defensible, I suggest that prohibiting ADDUs in the district itself be sent forward and making ADDUs conditional on abutting properties. That would be an excellent compromise, because it would give the Planning Commission in the future an opportunity to consider any request from an ADDU on an abutting property on its own merit. By recommending that this regulation amendment be approved in whole or compromised, you can make a strong, strong statement today that Auburn, in a small way, acknowledges that our architectural history is important. Supporting this change is good for all the citizens of Auburn, not just a small group that would benefit individually. It would retain history in a city that the city is justifiably proud of. Thank you for your time, I appreciate your attention.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Jenkins. My husband and I will live at 406 North College with our dog Tucker, and I thank you for the opportunity to come and talk to you tonight. I also have written it down because I can go off a mini rabbit trail. Would you, and I'd like to begin by thanking you all for your time. I have no idea how much time you all put into what you do. I don't know about zoning very much, except what's up here and what my husband corrects when I come home misinformation, and he'll just fix it for me. I don't know about business, a lot of business. I know there are a lot of business people here that have different interests in different places in the city, and, and all of these people and your experiences are very important to the city of Auburn. I know enough to know that I just don't know. But what I do know is my experience as somebody who's lived at the historic district for six years, and I thank you for the opportunity to come and share my opinion on, on having the ADDUs approved for the historic district, and so here I go. We've lived there for a little less than six years, and we see the historic district as a display of Auburn's architectural history and as one of the gateways to the city of Auburn. I know there are many, but we feel like that little pathway right there is a gateway that shows the history of Auburn with the Carrie Pick House, the Cottage, the Crenshaw Guest House, even Mr. Pease. I mean, that's just kind of iconic there. The laundromat, which I have been to, the Catholic church, we're so excited about that chapel, oop, the chapel being there, Father Bill's legacy there, so much history. Also, that, just the little cottage beside us that has students in it. We have students in our district, we have retirees in our district, we have businesses in our district, we have, my husband and I are empty nesters this year in our district, and we have college students walking up and down the street. Yesterday, George walked by, who's an architectural student, carrying his pap's blue ribbon and his red solo cups, and he said, "Do you live there?" And I said, "We will, come and look," and we showed him our house. And, I mean, we have students all the time. I know the little ladies that walk up and down that street. It's a quirky, delicate balance of people. We've lived there for six years, we knew, kind of knew what we were getting into when we got in there. We knew there was a little book of stuff that we had to follow, we knew that the city would help guide us. We didn't know we would have as much opposition at times that we do have, and that's okay. People are people, life is messy, we'll work through it. And what I hope is that we will respectfully disagree when we disagree, and we will encourage and appreciate when people go the way that we think it should go. If it doesn't, that's life, well, but I'm thankful I can express my opinion. When we purchased the property, we knew we had to follow those guidelines. The decisions we make are deliberate, they take, when we do things to our homes, they take time. A lot of times, they take extra money, because we had to, we just had to order six windows from Philadelphia that had to come through Cincinnati that were two months late, because they, we had to have the wooden windows that matched exactly like the ones that were there. We understand that, we get a little stressed, I'm a little grayer, and that's okay. The decisions we make are our choices to make. If you moved into a neighborhood within homeowners association, you are given the info at closing, and then you're required to pay the dues and follow the guidelines, or you can work to change them within your own neighborhood. I am not anti-ADDU, but I am for allowing them in certain places. I feel personally if ADDUs are permitted in the historic district or properties abutting it, I feel that it will be difficult to communicate to people living in them, probably students. The guidelines and requirements of the historic district, I'm not sure the students in these homes will have the same desire, time, or resources to maintain their property. Now, there are students right next door to us, and whoever owns that building, my husband knows him, or knows who does, they take care of it, and they do a really good job, and we love those students. We invest in them and we take care of them, too. We invest in the lives of these students, and we understand and appreciate the value that students bring to our city. But I'm just asking you to think about our district, our neighborhood, our quirky neighborhood that we share with so many people, not only the people in our neighborhood, but the people who drive through our city. To add ADDUs to the delicate balance and expect the people living there for so short a time to maintain and follow those guidelines would be an added burden to them, to others, to us. I hope that doesn't sound rude or exclusionary, because I certainly don't mean it. We're a quirky neighborhood, we have students, we have a lot, and I love them. But I'm asking the ADDUs be allowed only outside the North College Historic District, not within it, and to the properties abutting. And I would ask that if they are allowed in the abutting, that at least they be considered conditionally. So, thank you so much for your time.
Okay, thank you. Sir?
I'm Bill Gwynn. I live at 439 North College. I've been in Auburn 50 years, I've been on North College Street for 45 years. I did the documentation to put our district on the national register. In recent years, I've seen more and more developers, people coming in, manipulating what's in there to destruct, to give more destruction to the historic fabric of this town. There is a book called Vanishing Auburn, and we are vanishing down just to a few buildings on North College Street, and I know there's another one about to be gone on South College. I ask that this not be allowed, that putting eight students in a building, I have experienced. The corner of Drake and College, right beside me, for a year and a half, there were eight students in there, I called the police twice a week, and it was only when we finally, that they, they would get rowdy, they'd raise hell, they had radar, they could tell when the police were coming, and then finally, they, they were urinating, standing in the middle of their front yard on the corner, with cars and flashlights around, as a guy urinated in the middle of the, of the, of the front yard. We finally got them to court, they were finally forced to leave. We talk about, I, I taught for many years, so I know students. We talk about students as academic communities, we know that they're going to be kind of party communities, too. And if you put that, eight groups of eight students in there, you're going to have more and more parties and less and less of a neighborhood. I ask that you deny this in the, in the district and adjoining to the district. We're not just putting abstract things in there, we're putting buildings with eight students, eight students who love to party, and I love to party, too, but it doesn't, it should not be in that area. I thank you for your, for your service, we need this kind of work, but we also need to try to preserve Auburn, because the developers are coming in many ways and taking away the little we have left. Thank you for your attention.
Evening. My name is Steve Jenkins. I currently reside at 371 North College Street, and will be residing at 406 North College Street here as soon as I can get my contractors finished. But I'm, I'm here today in opposition to allowing ADDUs within the historic district, abutting, abutting properties. It would be nice, but I understand that there are a lot of abutting properties, and they're, they're zoned in many different fashions. But I, I concur with Mr. Gwynn and my lovely wife, and Sherry here, that, you know, the historic district is something that the city needs to be proud of, and the, the homeowners in that, in that region are putting a lot of money in their homes. We've seen students in, in homes in the historic district, when there are students in the historic district, with the exception of a few, the properties are deteriorated, deteriorate rapidly. I've personally purchased one of those homes and moved the fraternity out of the house, and the house was in shambles, and it is, it is one of the oldest homes it left in the district. There is also another home currently just got purchased, which I think the homeowner is, is attempting to clean it up, and it has students in it as well, which is now currently the worst, the worst home in the district. The house two doors down at 422 North College, up until recently, had students in it, and we, too, called the police several times for partying outside that home. Primarily, they would party till 11 o'clock, then they would party all the way down to the bars and back until 2:00 a.m. So, we, we, we see it, and we, we see respectful students coming and going through the neighbor, through our neighborhood, walking to wherever they live north of us as well. So, we see both ends of it. We've also had, I can take, go through the numerous occasions at, at 371 where we've had drunk students on the porch passing out, in my bushes, coming up my side stairs, I called the police, you know, and they, they had to haul them off to, to the drunk tank, I guess, so whatever they call it these days. But, so, we love the historic, historic district, we're pouring our money and our soul into it, we want to preserve as much as we can, enhance as much as we can, and bring out the character of the neighborhood, and, and we want to maintain it so that when the, when the visitors, tourists, game day folks come through town, they drive through and are proud of what's there, and as, as, as everyone else stated, that, that's our primary, our primary goals. And we feel that the ADDUs, though the historic, like they said, although the, what is it called? The HPC can, can limit what the property looks like, it really can't control what the, what the use is for, and that'd be your job and the city council's job, and we, we feel that, that, and I have, I do have a question. Mr. Gwynn said eight residents in a home, this is only five, is that correct, or is there eight allowed in ADDU?
I think it depends on...
No, there should, there's a limitation of five unrelated per our occupancy regulations.
Okay.
So if there were eight unrelated, we, there would be a violation.
Okay. So it's, it's, it's still, still five, I just want to make sure it didn't get changed somewhere. Okay. So, yeah, we feel that, you know, homes of that size geared directly towards students, and ADDU is an academic dwelling unit, it will be targeted towards students, there is no single-family home, uh, single families, young family that would, that would rent that home for the price they're going to get for them. So, there's just no way. And, so it is targeted directly at students, and we feel that our district would be better suited with those outside of it. So, thank you.
Ryan Cassidy, 801 South Gay Street. Kind of coming into this a little bit late, but looking at the lines and whatnot in the different zoning areas, there's certainly a lot going on there. But where in the district would the zoning allow for an ADDU? I know NC 20, it would not allow for ADDU, NC 4 certainly not, I'm not sure what NRD is, and then I guess RDD would allow for it, is that correct?
That's right. I anticipated this question. So that's correct. So, that's correct. NC would not be allowed. So, this is all NC within and with the abutting by virtue of a change, an amendment to the ordinance. It's currently, they're currently permitted by right in RDD. So, you've got RDD up here, and of course, all up through here, CRDU.
That's what we're debating right now, whether that is going to stay in place or not. I mean, that was...
Right. The current, the current packaged amendment is, is here tonight for your consideration and potentially recommendations of amendments or amendment, or an amendment or what have you. That's totally at the discretion of the commission. Conditional use approval would be required for an ADDU along here. It was in, the original proposal would have precluded it here. Now, conditional use would be required, is currently required here, not permitted here in CRDW. So, you've got, I guess, really what you're talking about. These are areas that would, this is obviously the big area here. It's, I think, the primary subject of concern, and then there are other areas that could, you know, could potentially allow an ADDU by conditional use approval.
Okay. That's basically what I thought was correct, and so, the, the primary area really is, is the RDD area, if I'm correct, and then, you know, the adjacent properties. So, much of the area, the neighborhood, the historical district is already prohibited from having these ADDUs in it. And then the area where it's permitted right now, RDD, you know, there's a bank, actually, there's two banks. There's a church that occupies a good bit of it. And then, I know I did a project in RDD in that area, right across the street from Mr. Pease that was non-contributing, and I went through those processes and whatnot. So, we didn't really have to conform to, you know, the specs of the historical district, but there was a process we went through, and it was a multi-family deal. But, I mean, as someone who does build and who has built this product in the past, I mean, personally, I wouldn't have an issue with there being a restriction to it in the zone. I've always questioned the RDD and the historical district being, to me, mutually exclusive items, you know, redevelopment district and historical. They don't really jive with one another. I don't really understand why that's, that's in there to begin with, but I definitely would be very much opposed to kind of the extension of a restriction beyond the bounds of what is the zoning area. You know, like, well, if you're near it, or you can see it, or you can throw a baseball that far, you also can't do it. I just think it gets a little out of hand, and I think the district is protected within its boundaries. I think that's the reasoning for the formation of the boundaries of a historical district. I respect the folks that have houses there, and I think there's, there's some really beautiful homes in there. But again, you know, as they were all speaking earlier, like, you know, we chose this, and we chose that, and we chose to do this and that. They did choose to do that, but I don't think they should be able to choose for other people what they can and can't do, you know, outside of that district. That was something they went into, knowing what the restrictions were upon them, and to place it on others who are in adjacent districts goes beyond the means of reasonability to me. So, thank you.
Let me, I just want to clarify, though. So, you mentioned in the district, you, it sounded like ADDUs being prohibited would be okay by you.
Well, that's just my one person's opinion, yeah.
My interest is of the, the boundaries. What's your opinion on the boundary?
Well, so, the adjacent parcels, I don't agree with that. Again, I mean, I think it's an extension of a prohibition beyond the bounds of what the zone is for. I mean, personally, I have been impacted financially to one of these little caveat things on the zoning in urban, I mean, in, yeah, urban neighborhood south where I had to step down provision that, you know, basically is like a 20, over a 20% reduction in what I can do because I'm near to someone who has a house.
In the boundary areas, you would say let it be the way it is now?
I would say, I mean, that, again, my opinion, no. I think it, I think it should be allowed. I mean, there's so much, even in the historical district, you know, there, there's already a lot of nonconformities and everything. I mean, I think they were speaking about some of the student stuff that's already there. I'm familiar with that place as well. A friend of mine used to own it, so it's like a house, and I think Baby Steps was in there for a little while. I'm not sure. And then there's some apartments behind it, which is certainly nonconforming, but it's an old house, and Forrest took about 37 and a half seconds of my time. So, I just want to say that it's not all that.
You asked a question, so that, that does, that does kind of...
I do want to just say this because I think it's an important point. It's not the students that are tearing up the houses. It's the owners who don't fix the houses that the students are living in, and I think that's a very important point. It's bad owners, people, and I've bought a lot of houses that were run down to shambles by local Auburn people who never took care of them. So, you know, it's always like throwing the students under the bus, but when something doesn't get fixed at a house that's owned by someone, it's not the students doing it. It's the person who's being a derelict owner. So, just wanted to say that.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Anybody else? And again, please, if you have not signed in, please do at some point. Thanks.
My name is JP Lemay, and unlike most of the people that have spoken, I do not own a home. I own the property where Mike and Ed's barbecue of Auburn is.
Okay.
Which I have owned for 19 years. I moved to Auburn in 2000 and worked and built the business and bought the property, and I'm totally against this and 100% with the guy that was just up here. I'm right beside Mary Cho, which is a beautiful house. All the houses down that way are beautiful. I mean, if it's not broke, don't fix it. I mean, I just think the way it is should be the way it is, and to come in and, and to be able to control what I've worked for and what I can do with it, I just don't think it's right. So, I'm not going to take much of your time. I'm just going to say I'm going to oppose it.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks. Anybody else?
I am a part of an ownership group of 145 East Drake, which is in the district and RDD and has, you know, was a home, daycare at one time, I believe, and has been a student house for the time, 20 years I've been here, and basically a frat house for that time. I think it's important for you all to remind yourselves, and I get everything that the folks who permanently live in the historic district, which I would like to point out, are NC-zoned properties. And today, academic dwelling unit or student housing type of any kind that would be more than too unrelated is prohibited already. It's not allowed. So, changing the rule like we're talking about isn't going to do anything as far as prohibiting future development of ADDUs on those NC-zoned properties. They are already prohibiting it. And the reason why the gentleman, and what the gentleman described at the corner of College and Drake is obviously not allowed. It was illegal then. It's illegal now, and the reason why they were finally able to run those kids out of there through court action, as sad as it is that it came to that, is because it is against the rules. And any, any owner allowing their property to be used that way in an NC area, you know, should be subject to sanction and not allow it to continue. The areas that are RDD in the historic district, Mr. Pease Grocery, a dentist's office, other office uses, banks, and college apartments, none of those are academic dwelling units currently. The, the students walking through who live there, who may on occasion cause problems, this ordinance would not change the makeup of that area. None of those are ADDUs. They're student housing, various types of student housing. You all and the city council, even the member of the city council who is proposing this ordinance, just voted to approve an academic dwelling unit development on the corner of Gay and Drake. If this goes through, you all and the council who just voted for it would then make it nonconforming. Imagine if you're that poor guy who has invested, you know, money in this community, walked hand in hand with you all and the city council through it. I think really everyone, including the council member who's proposing this, was for it, and now it would be nonconforming. So, after you tell him it's okay to invest in Auburn in this way, you cut his legs out. I don't think that the, anyone was intentionally doing that, obviously. I think it's just kind of an oversight as to how that happened. The bottom line is we're all, everybody, a lot of folks are all about following the rules when the rules kind of suit their agenda, but they're all about following the rules in the historic district, but let's change the zoning. Forget those rules. We need to, we need to follow the rules as they are. I would never support an academic dwelling unit in an NC area. Never support it, never ask for it, never would. I don't think it's right for someone who owns a house in the NC to then say, well, you're allowed to do it in your area, but you shouldn't be, and I want to take that away from you. Like Ms. Lemay said, I don't think it's right for members of the community or this body to take away from private interests for what I feel is an arbitrary and capricious reason. Like I said, these people are already protected in their zones. None of the houses they live in are RDD or CRDW or CRDU. They are NC, and it's prohibited there now. It'll continue to be prohibited, and the students living in the buildings in RDD where it's basically impossible to do anything with them because of the historic rules, nothing's going to change over there. It's just going to be taking away from a property owner for, for basically a show. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Going, going. You've already, you've already, oh, I'm sorry. Anybody else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and ask for discussion, questions, comments from the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I make a statement.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Took a lot to get this out of my brain in the last couple of days, but I feel like it's very important. I will state that I'm not in favor in a, as a whole, for what is before us tonight. However, I am in favor of an amendment to then recommend back to the city council. If any of this is incorrect, please correct me. The request to make ADDUs prohibited in the historic district may seem appropriate, but all property in historic district holds a city zoning classification as well as a historic district overlay. My belief that is, planning commissioners, it's our purview that we only consider city zoning regulations. The request to make ADDUs prohibited on any property abutting the historic district seems like spot zoning and a not enforceable option for our city. Only for clarification purposes, I'd like to run down the timeline. In January of this year, the planning commission recommended unanimously to approve the ADDUs. Our comments included definition of use, floor plans, parking, floor area ratio, and most importantly, permitted locations. These locations were established after much discussion and research shared by the staff, and the recommendation was not made lightly. After the planning commission's original recommendation, there was additional public hearings, postponement by the city council, and on April 2nd, the city council voted. They made two major changes to what was originally recommended from the planning commission. They permitted by right in the redevelopment district, RDD, and made conditional use approval in the neighborhood redevelopment district, NRD. These two changes are very relevant to tonight's consideration in that both zones are either within or abut the historic district overlay. I'd like to make a recommendation to my commissioners tonight. A motion can be later, but I'd rather us be able to have a discussion. I'd like to recommend to the city council and to you all to make RDD conditional as it was originally recommended, and I'd like to also recommend that neighborhood redevelopment district, NRD, remain conditional per the vote of the city council. Thank you.
Is there a discussion?
Is there? Yeah, I don't...
What's, and not, currently, we're not permitting ADDUs in CRD and in this case, W, the west.
That's right. They're not permitted in CRDW.
They are conditional in CRDU.
They are conditional in CRDU.
So, what you're suggesting, the only change would be the RDD and the NRD?
Correct.
And making conditional in both cases?
Well, all NCs, it's not allowed at all.
Right. It's prohibited.
CRDU, RDD, and NRD would be conditional.
And that way, we're kind of taking away this idea of the abutting properties. We're just going by the zoning areas.
Correct. Because there are additional hoops to jump through for historic district.
Right.
Just for clarification, you indicated conditional use would be required in NRD, which it, which it currently is.
Yes.
That's correct. That's, that's correct. Just wanted to make sure.
And currently, RDD is the only permitted by right, the way it stands now?
Yes, ma'am, and that's, that would be correct in this area.
Now, is it, so beyond this area, RDD, it would still be by right at the way it stands now, so we're changing it for the rest of the city as well?
That's what your, that's what your amendment is contemplating, yes.
It would be returning to our original recommendation for RDD.
Right. And again, we've talked about that, that as we go in and do focus area plans, we've been gradually phasing out RDD, but the, the other location where we've still got a fair bit of RDD is really largely up in that area north of here. There are still some pockets in the Harper corridor area, but a lot, most of that was already rezoned as part of that focus area study, so the presence of RDD has diminished significantly in the city over, in the recent years by design.
But under, under this text amendment, it would be prohibited, but she's talking about making conditional. Is that basically, that's the change?
That is the, that is the, that is the current change that is proposed presently.
Make it conditional.
Well, and the original recommendation was for, we didn't permit anything by right.
Our original, yeah.
At all. And RDD, what's left of it is a major section where ADDUs would be probably a great place for them, but it also allows us as a, as the city and staff to understand how many ADDUs are actually going in. If it's permitted by right, there's never any oversight of whether it's single-family or an ADDU, I guess.
I think that sounds reasonable.
Which means now, just to make sure everybody understands what conditional means, it means that in those areas where it is conditional, even if it abuts, particularly when it abuts the historic district, that petitioner has to come before this board and ultimately the city council, at which time these bodies review that proposal as to its compatibility with other properties in the neighborhood and can propose additional conditions on that property to make it conditional. This way, we're not arbitrarily saying across that whole area that surrounds the historic district, it's, it would have negative impacts. You would put the onus, of course, on the planning commission and the city council to make those decisions, which is what I think we're here for.
Right. Any further discussion or a motion?
I'll make the motion worded exactly like Nonette said. Should I read that? What should I do?
I, I think essentially you would be just recommending approval of the amendment as proposed with the, with the condition, with, with the one amendment that, that the, that ADDUs require conditional use approval in RDD. Otherwise, it sounds like to me, everything else remains the same.
I agree.
They said, in our, okay, NRD is already conditional, okay, gotcha. Yes, yes, that's, okay.
That's right.
Removing the request that it be prohibited in the abutting properties?
Right.
Just taking it back to the zone.
Yeah.
Of whatever that property is.
Cause that wasn't the original, that wasn't, that isn't the request.
Yeah, that, that needs to be made part of the motion.
Take it right.
Yeah, take it out.
So, we need to address that.
So, the text amendment would have to be adjusted to remove that proviso that talks about abutting properties?
Right. If, if that was a recommendation you wanted to make to the council, that would be, that would also be different than what has been represented and advertised, much as the RDD adjustment is, is a change. In other words, it's being recommended that RDD require conditional use approval as originally recommended by the planning commission, when currently it's permitted as approved by the council.
Right.
I'd like to also point out though, that we don't wanna necessarily change the conditional approval of the CRDU. Cause the way the.
No change.
No change.
The proposed, the original proposed amendment would do that, cause it, those certain, those certain properties that are CRDU on the map actually abut.
That is correct, a- as, as, as is presented to you tonight.
I think we have to include abutting, not only RDD-abutting properties, but CRDU-abutting properties must be conditional.
I think what the commission is.
Overall.
I think what the commission is currently contemplating is, is remove, is recommending that, that no parcels that abut the district be prohibited from having ADDUs. In other words, with, with, with that, with that blanket prohibition being removed, all of the abutting parcels would be regulated simply by the zoning district in which it resides.
Okay.
Yeah. And in this, and in that case, it's, it's, uh, conditional?
Well, it's, it depends by the, depends on the district. So, it would be conditional in CRDU, it would not be allowed in CRDW, it would be conditional in NRD, it would not be allowed in NC. It would be conditional in RDD.
Regardless of historic or not, C.
Right. We're talking, we're talking.
That's correct.
Yeah, we're talking the underlying zoning is what matters.
Zoning only.
Zoning only.
Now, the one caveat is that, that they're prohibited in RDD west of North Donahue, and I don't think the intention is to change that in any way.
No.
Okay. I just wanna get that clear for the record.
Okay, so who's got the motion?
We'll try this again. I move to strike abutting properties from the currently proposed text amendment and return redevelopment district to conditional use, period. And that's it.
You're good.
Have a motion, or a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. All right, let's move along here. Uh, the next item is item number seven. PL 2019 00315, Nana's Nursery, conditional use request, recommendation to the city council, Mr. Howell. Oh, you're not Mr. Howell.
I can be, I can try.
You can be.
Um, this is a conditional use request for an institutional use in the NC district, specifically a, um, home daycare center, not center, just home daycare. Um, the property owner and applicant is Tackella Graves. Um, a, this is a, like, it's a conditional use request, there's also a waiver request attached to it. The waiver request is to, uh, permit an institutional use, not on an arterial. The subject property is to the south of I-85. This is the, an area of the subject property. Um, just to kinda refresh what the use is, uh, is a home daycare center, it's just a single-family home that is being lived in, it's the primary residence, and as a secondary use to the home, allowing up to six children to, uh, be there and, under childcare. Staff is recommending approval of both the conditional use requests as well as the waiver. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I believe the applicant is here. Oh, yep, uh, so if you have any questions for her.
Do you have anything you would like to say, or just answer questions? Okay. Okay. All right, thank you.
And this is the, uh, just a photo of the, of the property and an aerial, and she does own the property, uh, to the, uh, east as well.
Okay. Okay, well, this requires a public hearing, so I'm gonna open the public hearing. Would anybody like to come forward and speak on this? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, ask for discussion, questions, comments, or a motion from the council.
I should make a motion to approve PL 2019 00315, Nana's Nursery for conditional use with, uh, staff, all staff comments.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number eight, PL 2019 345, Bent Creek Bank with drive-through, conditional use recommendation to the city council, and you are Mr. Caldwell.
I am, this evening. So, before you, as you said, it's a conditional use request. This is at the corner of Hilton Garden Drive and East Glen Avenue, uh, near the Bent Creek exit, just to the south of this property is the Wendy's on the other corner. We just saw last month, or have the, seen a couple months, uh, the storage, um, facility on East Glen that would have been right across the street from this. Um, the property owner's Barrett Hood and Satterwhite, and authorized representative is Brandon Bolt. I don't, no.
Not representing Brandon.
Brandon's over here. The property address is 2320, and as you can see, it is in the CDD zoning district surrounded by CDD, uh, mostly vacant with some, some uses, we'll see the aerial in a moment. The property is, uh, for, the total property, as you see in the bottom left, is 4.14 acres. The disturbed area is only in 1.14 acres, so they're on disturbing a small portion, about a quarter of the property. There's a large stream that runs through it that is protected. You see the sight plane there that identifies the buffers from the stream, uh, and then the bank and drive-through nestled in, uh, to the southwest corner of the property. This would be the development of this property, uh, with the rest of it being consumed by either floodplain or stream buffers. Staff recommends approval. Uh, we have comments, uh, that are primarily notational in preparation for a development review if this conditional use were approved.
Thank you. Would you like to say anything, or?
Uh, we can.
Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, this requires a public hearing, so I'm gonna open the public hearing. Anybody like to come forward and speak on this item at this time? Please do. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, ask for questions, comments, or a motion.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve PC case PL 2019 00345, Bent Creek, uh, Bank with drive-through, with any and all staff comments.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. And that kinda brings us to the end. Mr. Cotton, you have any other communication for us?
Uh, I have none, just enjoy your evening.
Okay, thank you. Meeting is adjourned.
I was about to say it in new business, and he just.